I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the people who stand in our nation, our God, good and pretty. Good evening, everyone. This was a nicer day today. You know, within that.
Within my house.
Yeah, well, then we all get that. Maybe I was creating it, moving around too fast. The board requests that all audience members be respectful to others by not whispering or having conversations during the meeting. This will allow everyone, including our minute taker, who's doing it remotely, by the way, to hear what is being discussed by the board and other participants. Sound travels easily with the acoustics in this room, and any background noise makes it more difficult to hear. Thank you. We're going to open with our minutes of our Board of Selectmen's public meeting held on November 5th. Could I have a motion to accept those minutes?
Don't make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Set down, please.
All in favor?
You, you mean. And we're gonna open our meeting with our Heritage Commission Community Awards. Are you comfortable?
She won't want to hear it.
All right, why don't you sit down there? Okay, that's all right, because Colleen needs to hear.
I know, just like David. Hi, everybody. Thank you for having us. Appreciate that.
There is no bad way until we're all set, because it's gonna make a lot of noise. All right. Audio is good.
We all set?
Yeah, since the audio is good.
So, since 2011, individuals, groups, businesses, and organizations have been recognized by the Heritage Commission and the Board of Selectmen for contributing to the heritage, history, and well-being of our town. I'm here tonight to announce this year's recipients for the 2025 Community Heritage. The Exceptional Commitment to Community Award goes to a unique group of volunteers, of students and staff at Belmont High School. For several years, on Earth Day, a spring cleanup event is organized around the school and town. Ms. Edith Tocansus leads the way by organizing other staff members such as Ms. Tarduno, Mr. Seaton, Mr. Foley, Mr. Charleston, Ms. Corrick, Ms. Angwin, Mr. Tisangus. I'm really messing up there. Sorry, sorry. Ms. Fontaine, Ms. Haskell, Ms. Hampton, Mr. McNabb, Mr. Tarkas, and Ms. Bordeaux, just to name a few that have supported this cause eagerly every year. Edith starts off the Earth Day event assigning students and staff members to clean up designated areas such as Sergeant Park, the Mill, the Toga Trail, Gale High and Church Streets, Wildlight Boulevard, as well as the Belmont High School campus. The Heritage Commission and the Board thank the staff for teaching community pride and the student body at Belmont High for your valuable contribution to the town. Our efforts on the cleanup event have not gone unnoticed, and this community award is just a small token of our appreciation. We congratulate you upon receiving the 2025 Exceptional Commitment to Community Award.
So, who can come up? Did you say that last name so that I can?
Can't get better.
She's going to be responsible for cleaning out names and also the, there's one for the office at the high school as well, so. Thank you. I don't know. You get to carry the bags off. That's great. Yeah, who's going to?
So, our second Heritage Award goes to Bill and Nancy Notton, who are also members of the Belmont Historical Society. The Nottons have been chosen to receive the Preservation of Town History and Heritage Award, and were nominated by two different committees in town. Both have worked diligently to inventory artifacts and documents donated to the town of Belmont by prominent, well-known townspeople who left their footprint and legacy such as Sue Roberts, Wallace Rhodes, and Linda Frohler. All three were known for the way they shaped the town in their quest to preserve its history. Bill and Nancy's time and effort at times focuses on delicate papers and artifacts. It's a daunting task, to say the least. Vital artifacts and historical documents that tell the story of Belmont's beginnings and are in good hands. Both Bill and Nancy are retired teachers, and Bill is a tour guide at Chaker Village. The Nottons both know the value and importance of safeguarding historical information. They have catalogued items such as photos from Belmont's train station and, of course, the Mill and Pennstock's beginnings. Relic items from the Corner Meeting House and the Province Meeting House are cautiously packed and preserved. Older items found in homes pertaining to Belmont's histories have been donated to the Historical Society. Bill and Nancy are quite the team with their organization and persistence over the years. We congratulate you both for taking on this monumental task and appreciate your valuable contribution to Belmont. Thank you, Bill and Nancy, for being the unsung heroes of Belmont's past.
Can we get a picture? Is that gonna be too much or?
No.
Give it a piece of smiling.
Stand here.
Where would be the best part? Where would be the best part? Stand right there and we'll.
Yeah, and just come.
Yeah.
And then almost right here.
You guys came right here.
Maybe, maybe.
Don't touch me, wire.
Maybe we could sit you guys down and share. That'd really be a crazy thing. So you don't block people behind you. Can we do that?
Yeah, you probably shouldn't be carrying.
I know, I shouldn't do that.
I don't need to be, well, sitting in a chair.
We're looking nice. Do you want one more chair?
There you go.
Actually, we don't. No, you guys sit.
We'll sit. We eat together. Get closer.
Pretend you two like each other. Okay.
I'll go over here.
So, there's a new word that you're supposed to say instead of cheese that makes your mouth look better on pictures, but I can't remember what it is. Cheese or Heritage Commission. Community service. Check them, Vicky. Make sure that they're.
Oh, my.
Sit down, we can stop.
Too late now, but. Oh, she's plenty with, hey, it is what it is, so.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you. Have you not good? How much is professional? I know they hit you in the meeting, that much you think you will help me there. All right, so we took too much time. It's good, right?
You did a great job.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you. Okay, 2025 tax rate.
We have received our 2025 tax rate from DRA earlier in the month. The 2025 tax rate for the town of Belmont is seventeen dollars and thirty-nine cents per thousand. The local school portion is nine dollars and ninety-eight cents. The town portion is five dollars and thirty-nine cents. The state education portion is one dollar and ten cents, and the county portion is ninety-two cents.
Chairman, let me ask a question.
Sure.
I would like to see a copy of the bus contract for the school district. And I want the original finance copy between the towns of Canterbury and Belmont. I wanna see what portion Belmont's paying versus, in my words, that Canterbury's paying. Because Canterbury goes to Conkey about every day, and we don't go anywhere near that. And I wanna see that portion that changes that tax rate. I'm not, I'm in the bus track, and I wanna see the money that's spent.
I'll see if I can request that information from them.
Any other questions?
I got a question. What is the reasoning that they turned out sensitive records out, tax records, on the sixteenth instead of the thirty-first? You realize that the sixteenth is just before Christmas, and you know you're gonna hear a lot of people crying and screaming. You know, we're gonna make Christmas, and yet we're gonna pay the taxes before Christmas. I mean, why did you pick the sixteenth rather than the thirty-first?
I didn't pick the date, but it's because we have to wait for the state to tax, to set our tax rate. And as the minute they do, we send everything off to, she works up the commitment, which brings up the amounts for everybody's bills. We send it right off to the printers as soon as we possibly can. There's about a five to seven day period where they, of course, have to produce the bills and get them ready for mailing. So we got them out the absolute soonest that we could. And unfortunately, it was the sixteenth, but that's not for lack of us getting all of our information.
But I don't ever remember having it on the sixteenth before, so what changed it? I mean, I know you just explained about the tax rate.
Yeah.
But still, I mean, it's.
Well, I do know that our DRA representative chose a very inconvenient time to take vacation for us. It was inconvenient for us when she chose to take vacations. That was frustrating. But we did the very best that we could, and I understand what you're saying, and trust me, I do hear about it. So, I, yeah, it is.
I just thought I'd ask the question, because I've always seen it on the thirty-first or whatever.
Yeah.
As Jen said, so there's many people who have to get their rates in. So we have to wait for the county, we have to wait for the state, we have to wait for the school, we have to wait for our tax rate. And because we do have the Sunray, Sunray Shores Water District where their budget doesn't actually have anything to do with ours, I also have to wait for their information. So you have to wait for all of these entities to get in their budget, their revenues, get into DRA, have DRA review it. I believe there's maybe two to three people in the entire state that reviews every town's tax rates, the revenues, all of their informations, and everybody wants to get it in as soon as possible. So, as Jen reiterated, we are, you know, we get it in as soon as we can, and you have to wait the five days for the, or the seven days for the printers to print it, then you have to wait for it to get to everyone's mailbox. So the sixteenth was the absolute bare bones. It was just time, it was just timing, timing when the tax rates got set. We don't just pick a random date because we choose to, it's just when everything gets set in stone and DRA approves the rate.
Just one thing I wanted to say, like, because I don't use Facebook, but I saw everyone complaining today about salaries in the town. I went and looked at the specific range for the town administrator's salary that was brought up. And the majority range for town administrators in New Hampshire is one hundred and sixteen thousand to one hundred and forty-two thousand. The median is one hundred and thirty thousand. Some people think we're paying our town administrator absorbing our money is not looking at the facts of what New Hampshire is. That's what I put down there, because I saw it on Facebook, and I don't use it, so.
I had it back to that until it was discovered. Thank you.
I got a lot of good praise from employees who have my back, so. And there were some good comments that said, obviously, they just didn't know the facts about, you know, me changing positions.
Probably I did. I saw that. Yeah, I guess.
From County Assistant Town Administrator to the Town Administrator.
And even the tax, obviously, the tax rate was crucified on Facebook also. And every town is dealing with this. There's no, you know, if anybody says, well, move to somewhere, it'll be less, it's not gonna be. It's all the same. Everyone is screaming about their tax rate, totally agree, nobody's happy with their tax rate. But again, when you look at this little chart, when you, you know, a lot of it, the tax rate really is, I mean, it was a little less last year, but it was higher than it is right now the year before. But everyone has to understand, it also has to do with home sales.
The value of their home.
The values of the homes. So we have no control over it. It's all the values of the homes, and that drives that, everything up. So, it's, do we like it? No. I mean, we. We all pay it as well. Yes.
For instance, but I'll tell you, when I started in 2012, it was really close to thirty bucks.
It was.
So, I mean, to cut it in half, I mean, sure, it's been thirteen years, but.
Yeah.
That just speaks to the diligence of all the town employees to really.
Most certainly does. People don't realize how much we are scrimping and trying to save and, and, you know, we're probably, well, we maybe halfway through our budget process at this point, and there's been no change. I mean, it's gone, the budget, sitting, there's been no change. I don't know, you know, and to think that, God forbid, if the budget does not pass, I think, this'll be what, the third year? This'll be the third year. There's definitely gonna be some cuts in services that none of us wanna see by any means.
It's unavoidable because everything.
We can only, we can only, right, we can only.
And get canceled.
Thank you, right. And I believe, I've heard this more than once, that every year that our budget doesn't pass puts us five years in arrears. It's gonna, so at this point, to get back to where we were two years ago, it's gonna take over ten years. No, it's, it's a, there's a lot more to it than just.
I did bring the appropriations and revenues from twenty-four to twenty-five, if you wanted to compare the increase, meaning either the school or the town or the county.
Well, that orange on this figure here sums up the big reason they did. The orange. Ooh. We have no, oh, we get a bill, and I think it's time to stop the bill. I talked to a friend of mine the other day, and I said, you know, I'm a proponent of saying no more. We'd be better off, in my opinion, private school, and say, this is what we're gonna pay you. We do it to the highway department, the police department, the fire department, and say, this is what we can pay. The school has gone absolutely right out of the world, and it's not the teachers making the money. And it's not. It's the people managing the school. Now, that man sitting behind you, Jennifer, for many years, I made sure at the end of voting, I went with Cynthia and with him, and we brought the voting records down to the town hall. And we sat there, she sat there sometimes, two or three o'clock in the morning, along with a police officer, because Canterbury had to bring them up. Because of the school section of their voting, not because of their vote, right? Last year, they didn't show up till the next day, but that was the law. All of a sudden, they do whatever they want, and we just pay the bill. So I asked her something tonight, and I want the accounting, I wanna see how much the bus contract is, and I'm gonna break it down and look what the transportation is, because we're paying, I think, more than our share, because Belmont, when you come right out of it, yes, we have some area, but not like Canterbury does. And we're paying, I believe, in their contract, for a lot more busing than they're paying percent-wise for their students. And I don't wanna be, I'm not against students, trust me. But at this point, we have to look at it. I mean, we share a lot of expenses. We've got, you know, when they see we're gonna get a new, we're probably gonna get a new fire truck. We're gonna get another dump truck this year. But the people that work for us made that happen through federal loans and federal grants, not from just taxing the taxpayer. And these are three and four hundred thousand dollar grants. And in the case of the fire truck, that's gonna be a half a million dollars. Yes, we had a grant to buy a new truck, but this program that I introduced in this town, or I'm not bragging about it, but a man took the ball and ran. I assume soon to be head of our department of highways, he took it and ran with it, and he got us a dump truck last year for what we couldn't buy a pickup truck for. He got us, we got another one this year because we had these older trucks, and that's very important for these people in this town to understand. This is a government program. These older trucks that are over twenty years old don't meet the emissions, and they want them destroyed. And when I say destroyed, we had to cut them apart, throw them away, and we'll use them. But you can get a new one, and they paid for it. They're Volkswagen of America that caught sugar, cheating the emissions, and they get fined three hundred billion dollars or some such crazy number, and this money goes to these departments. And I asked Mr. Pickowitz to go and speak to Brian, our assistant at the Highway Garage, because he took and ran with it. He did that, and we're gonna clean the fire truck because it's twenty-odd years old, and it falls into this program. Well, they're eight hundred thousand dollars. We're gonna do big, full-blown fire truck. We're gonna get one, and we're gonna get five hundred thousand, thanks to Mr. Pickowitz. And for Brian, our assistant director of the Highway Department, we got a grant because they worked out and they talked, because one thing since I've been a selectman in this town, there was one word that was wrong. The word was mine, because you run the Highway Department, it isn't yours, it's ours. It isn't the fire department, it's ours. These guys put it together, and I backed them both. We need this update, and we can get it now, and don't miss the vote, because we've missed some votes because of the pride of mine. And these guys put it together. We need to really pay attention to this, and I asked tonight. I wanna see the bus schedule, and I wanna see the bus billing for our school department. It comes in the shape of a review, because I think we're paying ninety percent rather than about ten percent on the bus bill, because Canterbury is a lot bigger land-wise than we are. And they go all the way to Conkey to turn around and come back bringing kids up here. And it's time for us to stand up, and it's time for us, as people, and there are not many in this room, but it's time for us to come out to a public media and say that, simply for us to stand up and bring these people here. We go to a meeting, the school, they get, they tend to one, Canterbury, they want it all, and we're paying as far as I'm concerned. Never mind the education, there's a lot more we're paying.
Bring it back to what Canterbury did. Last year, our voter said, no, it's a school budget, and Canterbury saved it. So something's gotta wake up in Canterbury for the school budget to get back on the track.
Yes, you're right. I agree with you.
Well, I know that it was brought up, I think, at one of the recent meetings in regards to closing the Canterbury school. Because some of this, and again, I don't know, but because the numbers in the classroom were so low that they could come to Belmont very easily.
Well, we're paying, they're not paying, we're paying.
But you have to remember, if you close the school in Canterbury, sell the building, whatever they choose, whatever gets decided on.
There may be a sign to debunk, shake a regional school and say, I mean, when this thing happened, it was Belmont, yes, you can.
Well, you can.
Belmont High School was Belmont High School, when Belmont Elementary was Belmont Elementary. And Mr. Sartak put that together because he thought we needed a bigger school, and he was chairman of the school board. He was a smart man, and he tried to put this thing together, have a regional, local high school. But yes, you can. I mean, the bottom line is, how much do we pay to educate everybody?
John, I think the stats came out that if we separated, it would be extremely expensive to do. And if we, as Belmont, would get a serious hit on it. That's why, that's why that got pulled back, because when we looked at numbers, it was very disproportionate from meaning coming out of our taxpayers on this side's pocket, so they reassess. From meaning coming out of our taxpayers on this side's pocket, so they reassessed that. Going on your transportation contract, I, when I was a school board member, negotiated that contract. Because it hadn't been done in a long time, and it is all based on mileage, not where's mileage. But mileage as a whole, and when Alicia gets that contract, because it's, you know, it's available to anyone. You will see that it's X amount of miles, whether it's Belmont, Canterbury's, or whatever. I don't believe it's broken down, because roots are roots, and, and so. The issue that needs to be taken up with the transportation contract is how many students are riding the buses. They condense those routes the more than they can, but you're not gonna do anything until that contract is open. It's up for renegotiation, because otherwise, there's clauses in there that you're gonna pay for.
But if you don't, and I've never seen the contract.
Yeah, and I think, you know, under anybody is eligible, but I can tell you that it is based on mileage and. And then there's a, also, there's another factor, because when fuel prices went crazy. They could charge a surplus, and that the district paid for, but remember one thing. What's going on with all these federal cuts right now? We're gonna see the school cri, the school prices go up again, there's no question, look at the city of Conket. And what just happened with them, with their insurance rates, and Shaker just got hit with it the same way, so. Forget about teachers and, you know, students and with the. Right, well, but that's, but that is what, eighty-seven percent of your school budget is all contractual. So you really don't, plus, on top of all of that, your mental health and special education is absolutely off the charts. And they keep making, and feds keep making all kinds of modifications and cuts. And we are gonna take that on the chin, whether you like it or not, I mean, this is, this, this country. Is continuing to slice and dice, and unfortunately. It trickles downstream from, obviously, the feds to the states, and from the states to, you know, local municipalities. And we are getting it left and right. And what I just saw happen with the, what's helped, just this whole homeless and, and housing, and I'm not gonna go off on any dragons, but. Um, there's a huge amount of federal money that was just slated to be cut, and we're in trouble. And I, and I don't know what the solution is, but Belmont Shaker Regional School District is not the only school district. Just like we did, like Travis did with, you know, TAs and all of that, pretty wild that there's a. Pretty low consistent, you know, that if you, if you chart it, you're gonna find that. It, it's not much different anywhere else, so it's more on that educational system, not the Shaker Regional School District.
I got a charted out spreadsheet, if anyone wants to see it, Oklahoma's Valley Taxes and school taxes, it's insane all.
It is. And it's, you know, it's easy for us, because we're feeling the pain here in our town, but ultimately, across the board. It's pretty, it's pretty even, I mean, yeah, some of your other communities, I mean, you take some of your smaller communities. And see how they're being hit, I mean, this is, and what do they do with their kids, you know, I mean. And they're already bussing them, like, you know, an hour and twenty minutes a day. So it's, it's a pretty sad state of affairs.
And now with all that great news.
I wanna see the bus contract.
Any, any, anyone have any more comments about the.
We discussed everything, no, I didn't really get on the tax rate that much.
I do have kind of a side thing, which may be because of, I was looking at this. So can you create a document that looks like this, that we could share with the public? Of all the grants that our employees have applied for, and things that we've gotten, or grants that are pending. Um, so that we can say, yes, we are trying diligently to find funding from other sources.
Yeah, I have it in my um PowerPoint for the budget.
I'd like to get that out too, well, so that they can, because we have done very well, our employees have done very well. In getting grants, and I think we should put that out there. Right? Are we ready to move on to the next item? Alright, um record retention policy adoption.
Yes, so every town has to have a record retention policy. Um, which is overseen by the town per tax collector's office. Um, so in Jen's office, Devin, Devin really spearheaded um the record retention policy. Uh, we've visited a couple of times over the years, and I just think um, I just got kinda kicked around, and then never formally brought forward to the board as a selectman. Um, so the policy just, just outlines that we have, you know, a, a committee, and who's supposed to be on the committee, committee. Um, it, it includes all of the RSAs and the applicable, applicable laws associated with the records retention. Um, how we must store, uh, how the storage, retention, and disposal of municipal records. Um, there is an addendum that wasn't provided in here, but the addendum um shows, you know, how many years each document. Needs to be retained and by who, and who's kind of the overseer of those records, and um the format of the documents, such as electronic and paper.
So it's the exact same one that you gave us at the last meeting to.
To review, yeah, so I gave it to us for you, I sent it to you on Thursday to review, so the. This is just blessing it, and uh, I'll shoot, uh, someone said make a motion to approve, and then we'll sign it, and then it'll be. Uh, set, and so we actually had to provide this to one of our grants managers um to show that we do have a proper for ten.
One, sorry, I just, when I was reading it, one thing I think we could possibly change, we have to vote some. Each time is just make it the chair of the select board be the member instead of a, a member of the select board. Uh, this whole record retention committee, that's a lot of, a member of the select board, if you, that, if it's a member of the select board, we have to vote someone into that position. If you make it the chair of the select board, then they're just automatically in that position. That way, we don't have to have another committee, you have to vote someone into. That's one thing I can see though. I'm sorry. Part of the job's at all, at that point. Just have to vote someone into a new committee again every single year, it's, it's at least he voted.
Think you should, right, um.
Yeah, you might be, yeah, for fairness.
For fairness, to give it up, or what if somebody else really wants to be on that.
Or whatever.
Just one more committee that we have to vote in.
Yeah, there's only one year. You, yeah, yeah.
Seven, seven committees later.
There you go, well, no, I think it's fine that way, and that way, you know, yeah, maybe. Sunny wants to be on that committee.
Yeah, I don't think.
No, I think it's okay, it, it will. We only, it's only one year that we have to vote on that, right? I think it's fine.
Okay, so I do have a motion if you want your improvement, and if you.
A motion to the, to, to approve the record retention policy as presented. Have a say, on the favor, aye?
So Ruth and Travis?
Yes.
And Sharon have the official policy for you to sign.
PD, PD Patrol Officer New Hire Approval.
So we've um given a conditional offer of employment to. Uh, a girl by the name of Sarah Walsh, uh, and we're looking to hire her full-time. Um, she's not certified, but she'll start training, uh, after she's hired and go to the academy in the springtime.
That's great, so she won't hit the January.
No, unfortunately, it's all filled up, so we do have one going in January, that's, that's offset early. But unfortunately, it's already filled up, so it would.
So she'll do her, well, he did his kind of road work.
He started, yeah, and we always typically do that. We give him a period of time before the academy, just to make sure that everything's. It gives him an advantage to go into the academy.
Someone like to make that motion?
I made a motion to approve the hiring of Sarah Walsh as a full-time, go on. And I'll say.
On favor? Aye, any opposition? Hearing none, we just realized.
That is the question, because I know now, so if, and you ha, you hire them now? And she can't go to the academy until when? When does she officially become an employee?
When we hire her.
She's still, you know, pre-training before, because they always go out on the road.
So, yeah, we typically have about, we try to have at least six weeks, maybe eight weeks before they go to the academy. It gives them an advantage to go into the academy, and then they go to the academy, which is for sixteen weeks. When they get out, they finish their training with us, what she'll do is she'll finish all of her field training. Here at the, uh, at the department, and then go to the police academy.
I think that's a great way, because if it's, especially someone that's not certified, it gives them a chance to go out and see. What, because we've had a couple that.
We've had some in the past that have gone to the academy, passed the academy, gotten out, and unfortunately, it didn't work out for us. So we, we, we had them work for us for three, four months, and to find out that.
So this kind of gives them like a.
Didn't we have one where the officer, where they were doing the extended field training before they went to the academy, and they kind of.
So we, we had one last year that uh, he got hired, um, and he was in probably eight weeks, nine weeks. And, you know, we could tell that it wasn't gonna make, make probation and be able to make it to the academy, so. It's, it's.
I think it's a smart way.
It doesn't, it doesn't, I mean, it's just, it has worked out in the past where we send them through training first, for us, so.
Um, we voted on that, right? Police Department, part-time SRO, new hire.
Yeah, so we're, and we're still waiting on the school to get the final approval to do this. So if that, if they give me the go-ahead, then I would, I would ask that the board approves Mike McFazan as a new SRO. As a part-time officer.
And that's Mike.
Yep. So and what, it'll entail with him is he'll have to go to the academy to get recertified, which is.
Yes, be recertified.
Called a lot package, so it's a, he doesn't have to go sixteen weeks, it's, it's intermittent throughout, so, but again, we're still waiting on this school.
Does the school already pay us for the SRO, even though we don't have one there right now?
No, they only pay us if somebody's in the school.
So. He can, but he can start working it before he gets his recertified, or, okay, so we don't have to eat that cost of him being on our payroll.
No, no, in fact, that's something that we had talked about, is he has to get recertified, and they were okay with that. Um, so they were okay with him going in the school beforehand, um, no police powers, but. It's more of a, um, you know, getting to know everybody in the systems, and getting to know the kids and teachers, and so.
He's in a head style.
Yeah, yeah.
So he'll work school year.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
Nice.
I think the reason it's put on pause is because of budget discussions at school over right now.
I'll make the motion to approve the hiring of part-time school resource officer Mike McFazan. With, with funds to be offset by the Shaker Regional School District.
I'll second it.
On favor? Any opposition?
Me.
You?
Yeah.
Alright.
We'll, we'll, uh, yes, it does, four to one, and so we'll keep you updated as far as the school's decision, whether they're going to keep the position. And then Travis says to your comments about um how we get paid back, so we invoice the school quarterly.
No, I don't know if they're gonna continue to pay us, well, because he wasn't certified, I know that was a part of the questions.
But yeah, it's hard reimbursement, we hit it quarterly.
Thank you.
Hey, fire department call pay due three street plus. Been a while. Two years now since we've increased our call department pay. So I didn't bring up the past one was, I know the initial one I had sent you had all past years. On spreadsheet, but the one I sent you to go to the board only has, um, what my proposal was. I basically had gone around to all the surrounding fire departments that have call departments to see where they were at. I mean, starting pay for some of these call firefighters was like ten dollars. Um, and for them to give that much of a commitment to training and everything else, ten dollars, and I would come in and do call pays. Um, it just wouldn't, if people just weren't staying for that, definitely. So I did raise up their base rate. For the most part, I raised up the base rate, and I gave everything else, um, the, I kept the, the pay amount per certification. At that moment.
So these are how many, these are what you have now?
These are the call people we have right now.
Um, you have seven.
Yeah, and I think one might be, uh, she took her EMT class, and I guess the same way like the police chief had talked about. The start, I realized this probably wasn't for her. So. She would probably be out, but.
But maybe it might, it might, um, what are we looking for, give some incentive?
For others.
For others.
Because some people do, people have been asking to come that work, say, private EMS somewhere, and they wanna come be a paramedic here. But then they look at, you know, eleven dollars to be a paramedic here on the call side. Um, doesn't really, you know, so this kind of gives, and it, and this, like I said, I went through all the numbers around, around the local areas. And this is about where they were, we, I kind of put them smack in the middle of what towns were around here.
And you're just asking to increase your rate and not your budget.
Right, you're correct.
You have a line in your budget that's just for.
There is a line for that, which we've always been way under.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't think, I've been lowering it, yeah, but I, I think. I, I think even staying with this, this is gonna keep us fine, because I don't think it's going to.
Bring that many people?
Yes, I don't think they'll be knocking down the door, I could be wrong, if I'm wrong, hey, all the better, I guess. Because we've got a lot of second calls that, that are, that are happening. And, but I don't foresee that, so I'm hoping the next year that we can, if that's the case, then next year we can readjust that. Forward, but I think it's time, this has been two years in the making of, of not doing it, and that was my mistake, just not really paying attention to that, trying to get. Everything else moving forward, so this is what I'd like to.
Well, I would imagine, I'm only guessing that having the call people helps with where, with those vacancies. Obviously, when you call them.
Yeah, so the second call comes in, or we need manpower on a scene. Um, you know, or a big, or a building fire, we can't, certainly can't do it with the three firefighters that are on. Nothing against them, but it takes more than three firefighters and, and that to come in, and the call department definitely helps. Um, you know, we've got some pretty dedicated ones, but not a lot.
Do you call in call firefighters last, like before?
Not fulfilling shifts, so call firefighters will, they can come in, so any, any call that comes in, a call firefighter can come back. That doesn't matter, we don't discourage them from that. Um, they'll come back, they cover the station for us, um, in a fairly minimal rate. Um, and then if we have second med calls, or a building fires, or another call in general, the call firefighters can take that call. And that's why too, I also put an incentive in there, which we didn't have before, I put an incentive for those to have CDL. Because those without a CDL cannot drive the fire trucks. Those with a CDL can, and that's a huge benefit to me, to be able to have a call firefighter come in and take, say, the tanker. Because the initial trucks are going up full timers, and that tanker is, is, you know, necessity.
Yeah, CDL.
CDL, right, yes, and that, because that's a very big truck, and that's one of our largest, so I definitely want a CDL driver on that one. But that's why I figured all the throw, and that was the only change I made, is I threw in like twenty-five cents for a CDL.
We can't use calls to like fill overtime shifts if nobody takes it, but if no one can do it at all.
It's mandated, so there's always a, there's always a um contestant on the side that has like, that's coming off shift. That would be mandated to take it. There's always somebody there, so if there's three people on shift, and three people call out tomorrow, and then we can't. There's always somebody there, so if there's three people on shift, and three people call out tomorrow, and then we can't find anybody, these three people are mandated to stay.
Even if they've worked like ninety-six hours straight in a row, you can't make a, like, a management decision to say, hey, you guys have worked way too much that. Is crossing the safety line and that's.
We, well, that's what I've done with bringing in the, uh, the officers to fill in right now, we're so shorthanded. So, or with firefighters, I've had the officers also filling in for firefighters. That way, because these, these firefighters are just getting, they were here, I, I was looking at their things, I'm like, oh my god, they're here too much, I gotta send them home. So, like, sat down with them and I talked to them, and I'm like, let's, can we get the fire, the officers into this rotation? And everybody seemed a lot happier, so not be at the station for three, four days.
So.
So, because that can get long and, and, and whether they're busy or not, even downtime is harder. When you're, can't go anywhere in a sense, and you're not with your family, that puts more of a strain on everything too, so we've been to have them. Be able to go home for a while, and then the officers help take a beat off of that.
Was it anybody you have in the interest for this? No, alright.
I don't, I don't really think this is the right time to look for this situation, but I'd have to talk against it. Because I just, you know, we're too soon to, to the budget situation, and you know, there's a lot of hard feelings right now. And trying to pull this out in front of them, I guess.
So, this isn't gonna change my budget line.
It doesn't change the budget line.
It doesn't change it at all, because in every year so far, I've been way under that budget, because they're paid for one is very low. And I've only got seven people, I can't even read them right now. Thanks, because I can't see the lines right now, I don't have reading glasses. Um, and. You know, like, I've got one person who's kind of seasonal, which is fine. You know, he goes south, um. And if you take out one person who I said, like, the EMT thing just wasn't working for her, so that's another one down, so these aren't. A lot of, like, these aren't forty-plus hours a week that there's, that coming out. This is just kind of giving them a little more incentive to come out, but I still think that line will.
The way I look at it, it looks like it's a, it's an increase.
No.
There's nothing here that says it.
So I don't set that budget line like I do, say, a firefighter's budget line, I don't say, okay, this person's making forty thousand dollars a year, so that budget line's gonna be forty thousand. This is set by, we kind of guesstimate how many people are coming out, and it's been three thousand for a while. And I've been knocking it back because we certainly didn't go up to that, so now. It's still gonna stay where I, and I don't remember off the top of my head. Yeah, I, I, I truly don't remember unless Alicia.
I haven't here the last two years you, you.
Well, the last two years I tried to decrease it.
Hasn't decreased because we're.
So, and then, but yet, when we made some adjustments, I always kind of took that one back first. And still have not gone over in that, so these numbers aren't gonna make us go over because there's still only minimal people here. So what I'm trying to do is these people that have been faithful to us. Is give them a little bump.
I can understand what you're doing.
But they're not gonna, it's not gonna change my budget.
Would you say that if anything, it would help decrease your budget line?
It could help decrease my overtime line.
Overtime line, actually. It could decrease the.
Because if, if the second call comes in, they can take care of it. So.
Um, you don't know when the last time these would work down.
It was in twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
That was the last time, um, because what, and like I said, it, and I just actually came across the spreadsheet. Not too long ago, because I was looking everywhere for it, to find out where we were in the past year's pay. And it goes all the way up and twenty-three it stopped. That was me, and so I didn't increase it. And I don't, I didn't, I don't think it increased by much before that, but it was literally like ten dollars a hour.
Well, you can even see your, this.
And those are just.
One and only getting twelve bucks an hour, I mean, my sixteen-year-old made more working at a golf cart place or a golf. Than that, so.
And these people are, they have the same, they have certifications to be EMT, some of them are paramedics, you know, like. You know, one of my, Andy's a paramedic, and that's a huge plus for this town to pay him. I can't read it, but I think it's a twenty.
Twenty-four dollars.
I don't know how to make it bigger. I gotta, so anyways, you know, so for him, who's, you know, not only a paramedic, he's a nurse, he's spent. All at his, at his job, to come in and make twenty-four bucks an hour, I mean.
That's still not a lot.
Right, it's not, but it's still giving him a little bit more to put a little gas in his car to come to the scene or to go to the, to the fire station. And, 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 and offset us when we're out on calls.
We pay for their, um, ongoing, like, training and education certification as well.
Help maintain that, yeah. A lot of them, if they work full-time somewhere else, the full-time, or the full-time department will do it. Um, Andy gets like, for instance, him, he gets all his stuff in the hospital, um, and someone like Andy also comes in and teaches our AM, AEMTs. He works on their research with them. So. And a, a teacher for education or, or for EMS doubles that pay. Uh, so I'm just kind of, like I said, I'm not going up on that budget line, which. You know, hope it doesn't, but if it goes into default, then.
Well, you have plenty of money in that budget line if it stays default because.
I have to put my money in it, it's my highest line. Um, you know, so that's, that's, that's what I'm not looking to do, so he's not raised that, I'm just.
Well, the good way I was looking at it, it looks like it doesn't point it that way, but.
I am.
It looks to me like you're just gonna give everybody an increased salary.
No, it's not a salary, it's just an increase in their.
In, yeah, right.
In a pay that they get and.
Yeah.
You know, if they don't sit there for eight hours a day unless, if it's a big fire, then yeah, they'll be there for a while, that's different, but. Fire between and right now, I've only got seven in theory, so. I, I don't think it'll hurt our budget at all. I think it'll, it'll help offset a little bit and. You know, give them something, I mean, I've, I've got some of these guys that come back and. And they'll do the littlest jobs if it means going, if, if it means one of them going to sit in the utility at a downed power line. To free up the full-time staff, it's huge help to us, and some of these guys like doing it. Sit there for hours with this telephone pole, and it frees up so that we can go and do, hey, whatever.
I feel some out.
They're not driving, they're just sitting there making sure nobody goes by, with legs on the trot to keep them alive. And it's a huge help.
So do you need to do a motion to approve this, or it's just, that's, um, I mean, it's not going over a budget line, it's not.
Uh, yeah, you should, you should, so that we have in the minutes that, you know, when we did do an increase to the call.
Alright, I'll make a motion that we accept the, um, pay scale increase as presented to us for the fault, for the call. Fire, fire people.
EMS, first responders, whatever.
All in favor? Any opposition? Hearing none? Thank you, thank you very much. Remaining twenty-twenty-five count holiday calendar review.
Uh, yes, so we have two more holidays left in, um, the year.
Yeah.
Um. We are closed Thanksgiving and the day after, and we are closed on Christmas. In the past, the board has, um, approved of closing town. Town hall early, the day before Thanksgiving at noon, and the day before Christmas at noon. But any town employee that is working at town hall that wishes to leave, they would just use their leave time, whether they have personal time, vacation time. For that and.
They just Christmas fall off this year, I'm just looking at. Christmas is very, very good. Thursday, so pretty much, probably most people will take Wednesday off, what, what would you do, have a, like a skeleton crew up till?
Pretty much, we have some staff that won't even be there, I mean, it's usually always, uh, you know, skeletoned anyway, because everyone is traveling and on vacation and.
And then they'll be off on Friday anyways, because that would be the day after, right?
Not after Christmas, we're not, so only have Thanksgiving. So we are open on Friday, a skeleton crew, because I think a lot of people are probably taking time off, but. They would need to either use their time or stay and work in quiet.
Okay.
Time to get work done.
Alright.
So if that is okay to you all to do that?
I don't have a comment on that. No, that's fine.
Um, the other thing is, um, it's not twenty-twenty-five, but I'm already looking at the twenty-sixth calendar. And next year is one of our biennial election years. Um, in the past, we have. Um, either just taken that Tuesday in November off. Or we have looked at what the other holidays are coming up that year, and, uh, the board has said, okay, if you don't wanna. You know, necessarily take election day off, we can, you know, either work it with the day after Christmas or the day. Or after New Year, uh, not New Year's, um, Fourth of July, but this year, um, the Fourth of July falls on a Friday, so. I don't really see the need to take the day after off, obviously, because it's Saturday and Christmas falls on Friday. So at this point in time, and it may be an unpopular decision, but I don't think that we need to do a, a, um. A floating holiday for the election, I, I think you could just keep it as the policy says and have the election day off. The holidays are, the holiday, yeah, you have to work. Um, so those, they kind of get a natural floating holiday, so I don't see any to have to take.
More time off.
More time off.
Alright. Okay, Jen. She's been waiting all evening for this.
Well, you guys see the preview.
I know, I know.
So this is the sample that we have of the new cell of voting booth thing, area.
Alright.
Situation. Um, it's a quad, so there's four stations, um, curtains are required, I only put one, kind of hanging up to go. Um, I thought it was gonna be horrible, I saw them on TV, I saw pictures of them, and I really thought they were. But I don't mind them at all, I do have them up here, if you guys wanna come check them out. Um, each station has one handicap spot, there would be a chair, we would still use what we can of our old. You know, the traditional booths, but they just don't make them anymore, and then we have a bunch of tabletop. Um, the sections that we normally do, because people do like to sit down, especially in the town elections, when your ballots get long. When you do nine ages voting, you know what I mean? Um, so, I don't know, did you give them each a copy of the invoice? No, I just have a number in their motion to approve, uh, if they want to, but if you guys wanna touch it, feel it, look at it, put your body in it, see if you think it's. I have to.
I'm going to vote now, bye.
Okay, so.
Uh, and that, and that curtain goes, you have one for each one of those.
It was two for each one, right? Yeah, there's two curtains on each station, so it would be four of them, but space and.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so when I went to the, uh, Perks Conference, excuse me, their representative was there. He said, why don't I send you a unit, you can set it up there, super easy to set up. Um, set it up, check it out, show a cheer select board, uh, he did give me a quote for five stations, which would be twenty, um, new voting. Spaces.
Spaces.
Yes, uh, total cost is eighty thousand fifteen dollars and thirty cents. Uh, which is pretty expensive, but, uh, we do have our capital reserve account.
So with twenty stations, get rid of all of our old standing ones that are falling apart in the grapple?
No. Uh, no, but it's a start. Um, I know that we could, because they're in like four station sections, so like, I know. So, there's a couple where the trace, if you put anything on it, it's just falling down, and it, it's bad luck, so we would. Probably be able to get a couple of those. I did email Steve Dalzell from the, um, school district about how many. Voting spaces or voting booths that we have right now, he has not gone back to me, I've reached out to him a couple of times, so of course, I don't have that number. Off the top of my head.
So we don't have capital for this? I know we've been putting it away a little bit.
A little, a little bit every year. Seventeen thousand? We have seventeen, we did, um, take out thirty-five hundred to purchase the voting machine. Uh, so we have seventeen right now before this withdrawal. Oh, yes, so this would cut that.
The, the only, the only thing is, it's gonna take up a whole different amount of space.
A weird.
Yeah, right, a weird amount, and are we gonna, you're gonna have some doing this, and then you're still gonna have your, your line of booths and is it gonna work? Because we don't resolve the gym anyways, we just pull everybody self.
Right, and well, I think that if we take out a couple of the rows. Of the, you know, the row booths with the curtains, uh, the ones that are broken, uh, we will have space back there.
Move the check-in station twenty feet ahead.
Yeah.
And you got all the women.
Yeah, yeah.
And you get the whole gymnasium, we, we only occupy about a third. Just move those people that are checking people in up.
Well, actually, you know, what I'm concerned about, I even, might even be, well, you can't bring them in the other tour now. Maybe you should just turn the whole thing around.
I, I'm totally open to suggestions and I'm totally open to change just because, you know, it's been.
And it's nice to change, yeah.
Have you seen anything from service and concrete that might make us have to spend more money on this account beforehand?
Uh, no. Just more restrictions on. Just, just be more work for. No, not at this point. We have to purchase the, um. And I apologize if I say the wrong thing, but the machine for people to vote who have handicaps, the one that you were talking about. Uh, to purchase that, or did the state provide? The state provides the actual station, but we are now required to have it programmed for town elections. Where before it would just be for state and federal, and the state, um, pays that. Uh, last year, it was, last year was the first year, it was mandated, it was about eight hundred and fifty dollars, they have a, um. Our, our, right, request for.
Proposals.
Proposals, RFP, request for proposals is out right now, um, so I don't have a number on that, I did put it into my budget. But who knows what's gonna happen with that, so. So do we have to buy the screen? I know you budgeted for the chip, but is it like a screen or tablet, like? That is divided by the state. Oh, okay, that's.
The only thing we have to get is the little chippy thing, right? Chippy thing goes in for each election, right?
Yes.
Now, um.
Well, for the ABS, for the assisted voting station, it just, it's pretty slick, actually.
Yeah.
You just program it, it doesn't save any information, it just allows you to make your choices. You put your ballot in the printer, it prints it out, just like everybody else marks their ballot and then go put it right through the machine. Um, the chips are in the, um, ballot counting machines. And, yeah, those are very expensive.
Or is this gonna be your first?
Yeah, first in our town election, we did a demo, so we did a demo here and had a big chance to. That, and then, um, obviously, because you guys approved us buying it, and then the guy dropped off the box, um, which is huge. Um, but that also means that we don't have to empty it as often, and then, um, went through us using the machine, um. It's okay, I mean, it. It's gonna be frustrating people, because, especially at the town election, because it's a multiple-page ballot. But you put the ballot through and you have to wait for it to beep and accept it before you put the next page through and the next page through, so I think that's gonna take some getting used to, but.
And that's gonna stall, that's gonna stall off, trying to get the ballot.
Don't want to show up for town elections anyways, so.
Um, how, how many, um, how many ballots typically does that box hold, do you know?
Oh, gosh, I wish I had that information for you.
No.
A lot. It's like, it's, what is that called, the elephant? I don't know, the hippopotamus, it's huge. It's a really big box.
So in other words, we might, you know, get through the whole election without having to take any ballots out, which I think it would be great.
Yes, yeah, and then.
Nobody can say anything, nobody's touched it or done anything with it.
Correct, and it's, um, designed differently on the inside, the old box, uh, if you have write-ins.
Mm-hmm.
There was this little chute that it would chute to one side or the other. This one, uh, the write-ins go very neatly into this little slot, and then they also changed voter law because previously, because the town people voted to have. A ballot counting machine, you cannot choose to have your ballot hand-counted unless there was a problem with it, and the moderator said, well, hand-count this. Where you couldn't be like, I want my hand-counted, oh, they changed that.
Okay.
So now, if you request to have your ballot hand-counted, and that slot is different either, but it's really organized in there, so. Yeah, so it's nice.
So it'll be a change, yeah, something to get used to.
Yes. And did you say that these new ones would be in addition to, to meet our requirement because our.
Um, we needed so many.
Registered, our registered voters have increased, or is this just to replace bad, old, broken ones? It is to meet our requirement for the increase in, um, registered voters. So we still have to replace the old ones. And replace the, well, I don't think we need twenty more stations, so, um, I'm. I got a proposal for five units, which would encompass getting rid of like eight. Of the decrepit old, um, voting booths, and, uh, also increase. For the amount of voting stations that we have for. That were required to have. That were required. Okay, so we'll meet our requirement per date. Yes.
Awesome.
Basically, round for voting stations.
I have a question.
Yes.
How many do you, how many would of those units would we have to buy to replace the booths that we have? My problem is, is that in two years from now, I fear you're gonna come back and go, oh, I'm gonna. My problem is, is that in two years from now, I fear you're gonna come back and go, oh, I'm gonna replace. What is it, five? And they're gonna be seventeen thousand dollars, and I like to always try to do it when it's. The least amount as opposed to higher, so I was just curious.
Well, I think right now, they're very expensive. It's been costing extra. We are paying tariffs. Somebody used it to the tune of about a thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So if that changes in the future, hopefully the cost will be less. Um, I don't want to completely expend the funds because it's always nice to have a little backup, because you never know what the state is gonna be like. Hey, guess what? You have to add this ten thousand dollar piece of equipment at every single election, um, so. And then, um, I believe that we're planning to put a warrant article in the ballot to raise funds to. Go back into the capital reserve fund for voting equipment, so just to kind of replenish it, so. I.
Obviously, that was my next thing. We haven't dealt with that yet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
I think what would really help is I watched something for the last almost twenty years now. Done this a few times. The people that are sitting in this room. You can't keep going over the voting booth, over to the people that is coming in, and then back to where you're sitting. And then take your ballot and put it in a ballot machine. It doesn't make any sense to me, you know. You can't just keep bouncing around, and Sonny knows we've watched this for a couple of years, three, four years now. We're over here, we're over there, we're over here. Not you folks, which are in charge of it. But selectmen, select persons, the moderator. I mean, realize he's got control with your deputy moderator, he's gone and, Helen gone, and they go. You can't have them bouncing around like that. I mean, they, they're here, you gotta leave, put somebody in your place. Let's stay there. And they've sat there a lot of years, probably more than anybody at this table. And it's getting worse every year. We bounce back and forth, we're over to the voting booth, we're all people are signing up, you're talking about. Stop it. And unfortunately, he's gonna fall on you.
That's fine, I, I don't mind.
No, thanks, I'm not finding.
I'm not offended.
But they're bouncing all over that place, and they're supposed to be kind of a. I can't say the word sacred, but they, they come in, they get their ballot, they go to the booth, they come out, they put their ballot in the machine, that's it.
That is the goal, to keep it streamlined like that, absolutely. Um, obviously, I'm a social butterfly, so I do have to be all very, no, I'm just kidding. I have to oversee everything, so I'm running around. But I, I definitely.
You're an example, not, not just, you're, you're in charge. I understand that. The moderator is in charge, and the deputy moderator, assistant moderator is in charge. We're sitting there for whatever god knows reason to fall while we're.
All of you, all of you, yes.
Some all of us aren't always there.
Yeah.
They're everywhere else. That's the problem I find, is you can't be leaving where we're set.
Yeah.
Either, either you sit down and do the job, or you don't, don't be bouncing around, and I mean that.
I'll do my best to curtail the bouncing.
I get to stay outside this year, so.
I will stay outside.
Hopefully, it's not a bull or a.
It is, I'm working, so.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Well, thank you.
I didn't make your birthday. I'll make a motion to approve the expenditure of eight thousand fifteen dollars and thirty cents for the purchase of five. Four-station voting booths with funds to come from the Election Capital Reserve Fund. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, dear.
Thank you.
Do we have any other new business?
Uh, yes, um, I'll have Donnie come up and help you with this one. Um, we got some information from the fire department today that unfortunately, one of the engines. Um, we need some unexpected repairs that are not going to.
I'm getting all excited.
We need to keep the grant, we were approved, gotta keep going on the steps, but.
Um, yeah, some bad news, so, uh, the guys were out doing truck checks and actually had a call, and while they were headed to the call, they. Said the truck seemed a little underpowered, so we called up Lakes Region Truck. He said, bring it right over. Um, he checked it out and it has a blown turbo. So, um.
I think that's gonna be my one ton also.
Yeah, if it's underpowered, it's crazy. I mean, and I'm just glad that they didn't ignore it, you know, they, they noticed something was wrong and they said, hey, you know, let's get it looked at, and he got us right in. He looked at it, he's like, you got a blown turbo, so had they ignored it, had, you know, it would have been catastrophic, but. Um, it's roughly thirteen thousand dollars to lose this. Um, which could have been worse, but that's where we're at right now, and this truck, right? That's the one we put right around twenty thousand into last January to fix a head. Um, that was just, again, when it went in for service, they said, go right through it, let's make sure that there's no scorched heads or anything. He saw one that wasn't looking good, caught it, and then even though it costs twenty grand, it's better than, you know, a hundred. So here we are for that.
Is, is that the truck that you're gonna replace hopefully with this?
No, no, this is a twenty seventeen, this is, um, this is our. We love this truck, it's a good truck, but, um, the replacement's a nineteen ninety-seven freightliner.
What's left?
Yes, what's left of it, yeah.
No, no, I was gonna say what's left in the, in that repair line, you guys.
Uh, we're over twenty, thirty thousand, and that's.
Yeah, so at this point in time, I've asked Donnie to kind of look in for the rest of the, what he has left in, you know, underages in the lines. Uh, to see if we can make up for it. If not, the only other option is we still do have some, yeah, contingent funds. Um, that we could tap into, so I will, we obviously are going to, you know, send it, do it, fix, uh, pay for it. Uh, once he, you know, this has happened today, correct? Um, so we'll look at what's left and then come to our next meeting on how to fund it, whether it be. What's left in the fire department's budget or what's left in the contingency bets.
Well, how long is the truck gonna be tied up for if you, once you stop?
Um, they've been great. They've already got the turbo there. He's waiting on some hose lines and some other things to fix it, once he gets it, a day or two. So at worst, maybe another week, um, depending on whenever the perks may show up. Well, now we're down to one working fire engine and, uh, the tanker. So.
Yeah, the truck's already sitting in the bay.
Yeah.
Not doing anything, because it's, we don't want, I mean, they can't run it.
Yeah.
No, so.
Um, and, um, that, this same truck is gonna need new pump packing next year. New budget, and that's gonna be five thousand. If they find the pumps gone, that could be twenty. So.
Which we did agree for that in our budget.
Yeah.
Can it be done this year? Is there a reason why we're waiting till next year?
I've, I just go by what my truck I told.
Yeah, we're, we're just trying to get through.
I think we held up because of what, it's over.
Yeah.
Uh, is it, I don't trust, so is it a thing where you're doing the turbo that, that?
No, no, this, this is.
But it's in a part of it that makes the water cool around.
Oh, something to do with.
Yeah, so, yeah, so this is, it's, and it's. It's not the same thing. I wish it was the same, but it's not. That's, this is just more post maintenance on that.
So the, um, packing issue, that isn't done by Lakes Region Truck.
No.
That was a specialty, special fire department truck to fire.
Yeah.
Fire service.
Yeah, and more preventative maintenance, this happens on every truck, it's unfortunate timing.
I would say, I'd say put it in, get it fixed, that's my guide anyway.
Yeah, I'm glad they caught it. I'm glad, you know, Lakes has been so, he's, he just gets us in there, so.
I appreciate the fire.
The relationship.
Telling you about it beforehand and really.
Yeah.
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 So did it happen when he was driving it? Did it blow?
No, it's not, it, well, it's blown, but it was just, he noticed it was underpowered, and he had enough, you know, experienced to.
Hmm, no. Yeah, yeah, I get it, ASAP.
Take care of all the bad news.
Well, okay, it's a piece of equipment. We have any good, oh, do we have any good new business?
No.
No, okay.
We have no more new bad news either.
All right, so on to old business?
Yes.
So we have, um, twenty twenty-six budget amendments.
Uh, yes, you have a sheet in front of you, um, with some kind of ongoing changes, that we're still going through the budget process. Uh, first one, I, I realized, uh, that was a library change that I brought, brought to you at your last meeting. I just want to confirm that the presties did have their meeting and they did agree to these changes, uh, so they're. They're in agreeance with what you've already proposed, uh, approved as presented, uh, for their budget changes. Um, I am suggesting that we reduce, trying to save every little penny here. Uh, reduce the building in, uh, the BBG, which is the building. I think actually, uh, building and grounds heat line, and reduce it from thirty thousand to twenty-seven thousand. Now, it's. Only a few grand, but I think we could reduce that line comfortably. Um, when we were at our budget meeting with the budget committee, I. We realized that we did not put the one dollar in the tan line, which is the tax anticipation note. Um, if you don't put at least a dollar in it, you have nothing to, to take from, so I just need you guys to approve adding that one dollar to the. The, that line, the O one four seven two three dash zero zero one. Uh, the budget committee did approve it with the dollar in it and backtrack. Uh, and then I'm also, um. The police department, we have, um, the Laconia is responsible for, um. Recruiting and hiring for the animal control officer, um. We got word that they have found someone and that the, the salary was more than we have budgeted in the past. So they have come back to Belmont to say, are you willing to, you know, increase your contribution, that Belmont contributes to their salary? I believe it's Laconia Belmont. Gillington?
Gil.
Gil, yeah, I'll contribute to that salary, because that person covers those three towns.
So we have presently have seventeen and you want to increase it to twenty?
To twenty, correct.
Um, that's still a good deal as far as I'm concerned. I would hate to have to think we've got to find somebody. How long could it take them to find this person? Quite a while.
Well, we've gone through two or three different interview processes.
So with my reduction in the heat and my increase to the E D, it's a zero increase. It's about it overall.
All right, so.
Different dog.
All right, so we don't need to, we don't need to vote on this.
Uh, you can vote on the budget, twenty twenty-six budget changes as proposed.
So.
And I will have Colleen.
All in favor? Done.
Five to zero, and, um, just on a side note, we're still waiting on the E D and fire union. Haven't seen any final proposals from that.
How, how even are they close at least, because this is getting a little crazy.
There, we are basically TA'd everything, and it's just one item in one department that is. Pulling it up.
Because when do we have to prove it by?
You have to have it, I believe, by January, um, but obviously, we're limited on number of meetings with you guys and the budget committees, so ideally.
Totally like to look at it before we vote on it.
We're right here.
I know, it's just, we're also right here to January.
I know. But it's in there, that's in there.
I know.
Right.
We've done our part, so. Okay, disabled veterans credit update continued.
Those Colleen's kind of baby she was taking over, she did, there was not really much more discussion to be had on this, she just wanted to provide you. With, um, when we were discussing.
Comparisons.
The comparisons, we weren't quite sure if the numbers that she had given you prior, um. Were inclusive of the towns, like stacking already in those numbers, and, uh, I believe it was not stacked. So this is what their current numbers are, what the proposed are for those towns, so I would say that overall with. Where we are for the disabled vet exemption, we are under what other towns are. So if the board was going to consider increasing any of the credits or exemptions, that may be the one area that you may consider. But again, not on the, you know, upper discussion unless any of you wants to move forward with that at this point in time.
I don't think it's a good time to be confronting this situation. I think we ought to leave it alone, uh. But I'm definitely going to help veterans, but I don't think this is a good time, because. What you're doing to Robin Peter and Pay Paul, like, you know, they get a decrease, we will get an increase. Well, I mean, somebody has to make up for it.
Correct.
And I don't think this is a good time to do that.
May I speak on this?
Yes, John.
Okay, so the, what the situation is, is you, we have two separate veterans credits, and I'm not gonna use the exact. Term. One is a regular veterans credit, which is currently five hundred dollars, and one is a disabled veterans credit, which I believe is twelve hundred. So disabled veterans have been able to get their, their credit of twelve hundred. And also get the regular veteran credit of five hundred, giving them total credit of seventeen hundred dollars. Um, there's been legislation that has said that they can no longer use both. So what the trend has been is to increase the amount of the disabled vet to include that other five hundred dollars, which they are no. Longer eligible to get, so they won't technically be getting an increase unless you choose to increase it. But it would be the same amount, just because they don't have the opportunity to have both credits anymore.
Yeah, we were debating increase, so.
Right.
Yeah, that's what we were debating at all.
So there's one to increase the exemption overall, but then there will be a warrant article where. Because there was changes in the law where they're no longer allowed the stacking, so, so not to, um, take away an exemption from someone. You will have to find a way to just increase it overall, so that they're not losing what they already have because of the state.
So basically, what you're saying is we should increase the disabled veteran by five hundred dollars. That is correct, because he's not, because he or she are not going to be able to use. The twelve hundred plus the five hundred.
And it's actually fourteen hundred, but yes.
Whatever, whatever, then not whatever, okay. So even though we increase the disabled, we're really not, we're increasing it, but that person's really not getting any more than what they're. Currently getting, because they won't be able to get that five hundred.
Right, and they would lose that.
They would lose it.
Are we gonna take that as their warrant article, so?
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll discuss that once I, you know, get all the guidance and how to write that and how to propose that. Because I don't think it would be your intention for anyone who currently has it to lose it, uh, because of the changes in the state and allowing the stacking. Um, so we would just increase it, so they would still maintain what they're already getting.
I would ask John a question.
Sure.
What do you think we should do about them? As a town clerk, tax collector?
Meaning what?
Should we give them an increase, or is it a bad time to give them an increase?
Well, I think in the case of just keeping, uh, the.
That's cool.
The people that are receiving the disabled veterans credit, oh, I would increase that at least by the five hundred dollars that they are no longer eligible to get. Um, as far as increasing the overall credit, um, I would have to look into it some more. To, to have a educated, um, opinion on that. I am happy to do, and just see what other towns are trending, because they also just increased the limit. That it, uh, that you, that the town can vote to give.
Right.
Yeah, so. But I, I personally am in favor of increasing it to at least be the total that they were receiving before. Legislation, you know, so they couldn't stack their, their credits.
So I guess if you even looked at us at nineteen hundred, and the way I read this as how Colleen presents, this is for total credit, there, you know, you have towns that are. Forty-five, three thousand, thirty-two, thirty-six, forty-seven, twenty-five, forty-five, twenty-five, twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
I really don't like somebody's comparison town, especially.
Yeah.
It's almost damn.
In the Inchester, right?
Money-driven towns.
And I mean, we are.
Sustaining that.
We have got everything besides the exceptions. But it's.
I believe.
Yeah, um, I don't know the exact number, that would be a common question, but I'm just looking to have the commitment and the learn.
Yeah.
Which is, is good, but it's.
So we, but everyone else, yeah, it's good.
Yeah.
Doing any other old businesses?
Um, yes, I don't know if it was at this meeting or. How we talked about it, but, uh, I never go to our newsletter, but we had, um, when we. Made Homely Road and Middle Route of Corvey, and TPW went up and they put up stop signs. Well, some little bandits decided to steal all those signs that we put up. Uh, and we were happy to report, uh, from the police department that the individuals who stole those signs were arrested last night on our warrants. We did get our signs back, so.
They increased their rules.
And.
Do we not use safety bolts on stop signs?
No, we, we should.
Now, CPW is now uh uh robbery proof.
It was?
Many of them robbery proof.
Only in Belmont.
So that's good news. Unfortunately, we already did expend the funds to replace them, so.
We get some extra stop signs.
We have extra stop signs now. The other thing that I need a little guidance on is um at our last meeting, we did report that the fire department was approved. For the the diesel grant to get a new fire truck. Um so approved for five hundred thousand, right now it's looking at the truck could be anywhere between eight hundred and fifty to nine hundred, whatever. Working on the final details on that number, but that leaves the board with the decision of how they're going to fund three hundred and fifty to three hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um if you are going to to take a bond or a loan over a hundred thousand dollars, our last public hearing needs to be January twentieth. So I just need some direction from you on how we want to finance this, so I can get quotes and and figures together. So that we can create and draft a warrant article that is representative of that decision. Um uh Steve is looking at numbers that are in uh still coming in and as he did when we financed the. At Tinker, as what's coming into the ambulance special revenue funds and what's going out of it. And could we finance, you know, finances out with a lease, a loan? Um another option is if there's enough money in that fund and coming to that fund for the next five years. You know, does that, does the ambulance special revenue fund have with that loan and and does the town increase their budget, you know, by the other half? Right now you're looking at probably uh eighty-seven thousand for a lease payment a year.
I think we should bond up.
Kind of giving out what we already.
I I hate to see those monies come out of that ambulance fund. Um I mean, what if, what if? I don't know.
What if we need a dribble?
Maybe, right. Uh well, I think, I think the.
You could only take from that part of the warrant article anyway.
That's probably United Auto Leasing and Truck and I'm gonna finance this on a five-year note. That's what I do it at two point three percent.
I I think bonding.
Yeah. Yeah, and and I believe the bonding uh rates are increased.
I said go through the voters too, right?
Right, right. No matter what, it has to go through the voters, but. They have to write the the warrant article so that obviously they'll understand, you know, we've got a grant for what's five hundred thousand. And we need some additional fund, but if it doesn't pass, we lose the five hundred thousand, which they've done worse than before. So um but yeah.
People will open bond and loan and see whatever happens.
Yeah, so our current, the current bond rates are um and I only have rates on a twenty-year and a thirty-year. Only because I just get in the library bonds course and there on July sale with for twenty-five was around four point eight six. Obviously, the the twenty-six rates won't come out until later, but they quote you on the July rates for. Your January. So I can just, um like I said, it's, do you want to fully raise and appropriate the, let's just go with three seventy-five just because they're still building it. It might be more than the three fifty. Do you want to, you know, raise and appropriate that one lump sum in one year and just be done with it? Do you want to, you know, stagger it over three, five, ten years?
Your placement, John, is that it's got to be on the ballot every year, correct? I mean.
We'll lease it for one year.
To expend it from the ambulance.
To take it out of our own money, but you gotta do it every year, but if we lease it twelve to fourteen, uh two-year lease. So one of these, I just handled two trucks for Berlin City.
Yes.
And they called me and said, can you, what do we do? That's what I used to do and I used to be good at it. So I called, we got two point five percent fixed.
That's huge. Yes.
In two years, I mean, yeah, it's been a public, even a public, we're going to buy a car nowadays, you gotta go buy, that's a fixed rate. And we're putting so much money down on, you know, we we paying three quarters of the truck upfront. So they, with us, with our bond rating, we have a great bond rating. We're not over capital, we're not capitalized, we're okay.
Unfortunately, we uh the grants is a reimbursement, so we have to upfront people eight fifty.
Yeah, well, the bond will come, they'll, I mean, they'll finance it in twenty minutes.
Sometimes with the bonds, you're not allowed to pay them up early, so we would want to be in a situation where you could pay since you're being very adverse.
Can you also just bring us the overall tax rate if we choose to pay it in one year, the three seventy-five?
Yes. And I haven't already, I have a spreadsheet for that on how to do that, uh so yes.
I I bet when you go to do the finance, this is coming closer to four hundred. Because you're gonna have some outfits they're gonna recommend on the truck because they're stuck, the truck we're gonna replace. Doesn't handle maybe the same fittings, they got this, that, they're they're calling you a price on the vehicle as you expect. Now, when they get to the outfit, when they bring in show here, you gotta have this do that and that do that. So you probably want to spend another twenty-five thousand dollars just in those big trucks. That's money means absolutely nothing that I'm glad it's coming in. At two. But it it can be in Berlin City Bank by those notes all day. All day.
Yeah.
Any other banks or leasing companies you want me to look into? You said United Leasing? You said United Leasing?
United Leasing of Berlin City Bank, which is one of the same. And you know, one of United, you have Berlin City Bank, guy knows Ford store right down here, they have two three. New cat.
Yeah, I can give you the tax rate impact on the full, you know, if there's anybody.
You've got to run when they, it gets ready to, Donnie gets down and they get this truck equipped, it's all sitting there. The chief, when I look at, well, this holds adapters and put what this old adapter was. And that little stuff that's not much, but it's gonna amount to a lot of money real quick. For them to bump to twenty-five thousand, it only takes minutes. Yeah.
We'll just need to decide on the funding mechanism by December so that I can, you know, get all the numbers worked out and get all of it. It takes weeks and weeks to get all that information in for the.
And only use K to the whole. From uh Michael Salem.
And then, well, I did reach out to the bond bank uh to get an estimate on what it would be because the libraries putting there forward. So older first, so. So I'm pretty sure it's because, so on a twenty-year um bond. Um they were coming forward with asking four point eight five million. Your yearly payments in the beginning are about four hundred and sixty thousand. The total interest would be two point one million for a total of six point nine million borrowed. So that equates in the first year thirty-one cents per thou- per per thousand. So for every hundred thousand dollars of your home, you would pay thirty-one dollars um your tax bill. For the library's.
At the present rate.
At the present rate, at the four point three zero percent. So if we went with a thirty-year. Um that brings it down to twenty-seven cents. Um so we would be borrowing four point eighty-five with three point five percent in interest. With a total borrow of eight point three million.
Would you like to do something back?
We could build dual one with this rate.
That will, that will remember.
That's.
If he wants to move forwards with the box. Um years from basically twenty-six till thirty thirty-three, you're paying about um. Four hundred thousand dollars a year because you're paying on the bonds.
And I said, money couple put this on the ballot this year.
That would be a board decision.
Is it a board decision?
You're the only ones who can go for the spending and take up the loan and the bond, so I I. I mean, yes, you guys already said you would support bringing it forward, but.
Yeah, I feel like those numbers.
I know. I don't know that you, I don't, I can ask, but I don't see why you couldn't say no at this point.
Yeah, that, Dawn. So I was, or I am now, was going to bring forward to the board and ask them. If they would request the library um trustees, a meeting with the library trustees. And ask them to withdraw. This project for this year. Um and and that can go on record that I'm the one that's bringing this forward. I mean, nobody has to be, I don't care, be the bad guy. Unfortunately, being in a two-year default budget, okay? Um and trying to pass an operating budget. That that library is so busy and it deserves all the credit it deserves. But we still have to run the town and we still have emergency managed, you know, I mean, we go on and on and on, we all know. Um what the consequences are if this budget fails this year. And I really and truly.
The way it fails this year, that might be one thing that has to be closed down.
Well, but that, and I wouldn't go that far, but I would say that that is whole, the tone. That big expenses bring will definitely dilute um our.
Trying to get anything else passed.
Right, and so it would be my suggestion that you make contact with the library trustees and ask them to withdraw.
I can make that my suggestion for member at least if you want, because I don't, I don't see this helping us at all about this year at all.
I agree with Donna also, I I believe the three years of boardship have asked through my chairman's sign. You're chairman, you got the big boots. I I I gotta, I gotta agree with Travis and I gotta agree with Donna and I think that.
You know, the library is very, very important. We all know that. And they've done, it's, we have no, it's not that we're against anything, you know, they probably deserved an addition a long before now. But we have a highway department, a police department, um what else we have? Um fire department, I'm going now, I know there's three things that. Uh we have to have these departments, well, we have a town hall. We have got it. We've got to have these things running. I mean, this is our.
I don't think you can do this. In good conscience without requesting their presence and and explaining equally the same as we just did. And then to just have a knee jerk and say, Mr. Mestropin. But looking at where we are, the tone of the community and what we need to do, I think is.
But but as you well know, in the last ten years, we've done this ten years ago, we did this again, you know, they wanted.
Yeah, but you, you, you have to put respect where respect is due. And honestly, they they've done a phenomenal job and you at least have to have them come in and express your concerns. And then tell them that unfortunately at this junction, it's the twelfth hour, we know. Nobody likes to have knee jerk reactions at the twelfth hour, but considering. Um what we have at stake here that we are not going to be able to support this this year.
Here it is.
I mean.
Me and I, so would you like me to invite them to your next December third meeting?
Uh well, they. They will only come during the evening, so they they would have to be, they'll have to make a special exception and come to our next meeting, I suggest.
They would have, they're gonna have to because your other, your PM one would be, I think, December eighteen. That's too close. Um I thought they really need to get on the ball with this um start. I don't want to waste my time, no offense, but I don't want to waste my time looking at funding sources if this is not even the direction that the board wants to, you know.
It's it's a good direction.
The trustees to reconsider and, you know, they don't even know the, you know, the total of this interest either and how much this is going to impact.
And I just want to throw this as a side note, you know, because I'm a big supporter of redoing our master plan. The library expansion was um on the list of the master plan of buildings that we were supposed to tackle. Right behind the police department. Um that's one of the things that the library trustees keep bringing up to me and this is another reason why. That updating our master plan is a very good idea.
Was it a town hall over here and then the library?
Um it, I believe it was town hall, the PB, and then the library. But I could be wrong. It's been a few years since I missed it.
Yeah, I think town hall was actually first.
But other than the master plan is being worked on through the planning department, if I remember.
Yeah.
Well, it was the intent.
It was the intent, yes. Unfortunately, it goes down to money. We can talk about me doing math and somewhere blue in the face, but we don't have the money.
So I have one other thing.
Uh now you're pushing it.
And all due respect, um when I presented my budget earlier on, I had um. There was a lot of reservations on how to build it and where I saw it coming. And I was gonna leave my housing line at a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Um today it was, when I got my printout, I had known that in advance, anyhow, it's at a hundred and forty-six thousand. And on Monday, I learned that the feds are looking to cut um three million dollars. Well, the state will be getting three million less dollars for housing support. And um and probably more to come, so I'm more than concerned. I will tell you that I'm doing some other um creative housing. With individuals and so hopefully I can stretch things about as far as they can go. But with the state losing um an estimated three million dollars when it comes to housing. We're in trouble. I mean, we're in real trouble. The push, 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 push when it comes to do away with homeless, do away with. And um. Basically, permanent supportive housing is being, for the most part, cut. And it looks like um the focus is going to be on substance abuse. Um if someone goes through substance abuse, um. Uh treatments, then there'll be supportive housing for them or a transitional piece. And that there's some uh focus also on mental health. But as far as like the traditional housing, um we have. A lot of people that are going to be at risk as far as losing in section eight housing. And they're gonna freeze, they're gonna freeze housing vouchers from what we're hearing. Um so there'll be no more, so anyone that's on the waitlist will be frozen. And that the, we're thinking and then we'll know more and more as in around January. But it certainly looks like um individuals that have housing. And are at the top tier, so if I'm a person who's worked and worked and worked to try to kind of work myself out of the subsidized housing. We're hopeful that if anybody's gonna be cut, that that's gonna be the level that's gonna be cut. The problem is, is when you cut that group.
Where are they going?
And they're only still paying, they're not at the top tier, but they're close, you know, eight hundred, maybe even a thousand dollars. If the subsidies depend upon the thinly size, you're looking at them falling out of that program. And looking at rents at fourteen, sixteen, twenty-one hundred dollars. So it's, it's pretty scary. I mean, what's being presented? I mean, we already just saw the SNAP thing and it got shifted, but and the mentality of what I just dealt with. With SNAP, that people want to go to the grocery store. They didn't want to go to food pantries. It wasn't their fault. It was, it was a rough, rough, probably three weeks of roller coaster with a lot of individuals. So when this starts to really hit like it's expected, um we're headed with some pretty rocky roads, honest. The other piece was, is Travis, Rose, myself, went to a Belmont County. Um homeless meeting.
Oh, Alicia was there too.
Were you there? I didn't see you.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, that's.
And. It was interesting. I mean, a lot of, it became very emotional. Um, but there was an awful lot of facts that were incorrect, that were presented. And there was a huge target on the nonprofits and I did not, I mean.
If I was one of those employees with somebody who attacks, I would've gone into the office the next day and quit. As hard as they work and to be.
Well, so, and I just, just to clear the air, um, so there's been so, so much, um, focus on Hanzel. Right up the bypass, that whole strip by the industrial park. And how much money, because so much was focused on the city of Laconia and how much money they've spent in all these encampments. That encampment cleanup. Costs the city nothing. The state did it. The state overall with several other encampments had spent about forty thousand dollars, okay, for those cleanups. So just to dispel, when people are talking, please understand that the city of Laconia didn't take it on the chin for that. The other, um, Spruce Street, which is private property in Laconia. Was cleaned up, um, by Lakes Region Mental Health and Lakes Region Mental Health. Used what was left over for winter, winter, winter funds. And so, but that was made, that that was all, you know, city-driven, city, it's in Laconia and absolutely they get, you know, they're a city, they're, they're, they've been attracted. But the second time that that Spruce Tree, Spruce Street cleanup, because it went back, they cleaned it up and then it redeveloped. Um, community action and Lakes Region Mental Health and Sober Housing. And, um, those were all funds that came from those organizations. On top of all of that, the freebie manpower that the nonprofits put in. Equaled about thirty thousand pounds of thirty thousand pounds of waste. That was all picked up by all of these individuals that do nothing and it's repetitive and it's overlapped. And it was pretty sad because for some individuals that were speaking and we thought that they might've had a clearer understanding of who was doing what. Um. Was, it was, it was pretty saddening. The other piece that people were bussing people into, if you've heard this from them, that. Laconia feels that they were, they were busloads and people were being bussed into the city of Laconia. Um, a couple of years ago, that was the truth, but that has since gone away. Eighty-four percent of the people in the city of Laconia that are homeless have been in Laconia and they've been in Laconia for longer than, um, you know, a year. And so I, just for the record, because so much of this gets so distorted. There was a statement from the mayor at the end and we had left that had said that he thought it was Bellknap, a Bellknap County and that. And I was a little disappointed in that statement because. They should've invited a board member from each one of the county, I mean, each one of the towns in the county or it extended it. And, um, this started as a Laconia event and then incorporated as Bellknap. But, um, ultimately, there was really an awful lot of information from people emotionally on both sides of it. But I, I, I'm not certain where it's gonna go. I'm not, I'm not, I mean, we, I, everybody dumps on the city of Laconia and it frustrates me. Because when Laconia breaks up their encampments, they come here. And then when Tilton and those guys break them, they come here. We're stuck in the middle. And then obviously when PD or, you know, we go and the state wants them, then they'll shift again. So it's definitely, you know, a nut and shell game that goes on, but. We are not, and it's my opinion and I'll, and I'll continue to keep it, we are not going to, um. We're not gonna change it unless we get a county shelter. It's the bottom line. We, you know, then you can arrest, um, individuals if. You know, and then potentially if they clean up their messes, then PD will cite them and then release the, you know, before. It's to go to jail, stuff like that, which has been a lot of conversations so that it at least holds them accountable. Because you know, if you send them, it's gonna cost us money if we put them in the county jail. I mean, the county can't support what it has. With the volume of people that are going through the courts as it is right now. Now let's add all kinds of extra people to it. It, it doesn't make any sense, but that problem, the homeless problem's not going away. I'm gonna be just, and that was the intent of me even coming forward, it's always been if. Don't go to the budget committee and ask them for more without the board knowing where a department head was going.
So are you.
So I'm gonna increase it ten thousand dollars. So it's gonna go from one forty to one fifty. And I think, uh.
Do you have that, your line in front of you so the board can make that decision now, just to step up? Do you have that number?
I do. Let me give it to you. Um, it's, it's zero, one, four, 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 five, four thirty. And it's my housing line. It was proposed at one forty, today it's one forty-six, eighty-four. And I'm proposing we go to one fifty. And I'm not changing anything else.
I'm so moved. Do I have a second? On favor?
Sunny, what do you think?
I ain't thinking nothing. I'll keep it quiet on this issue. Because I have my ups and downs on this.
Yeah, just spend the day with me.
I need a vote.
I had John and Sharon at the same exact time, so who wants to take a second? John?
In all favor, Brian? I'm concerned even if you're at one forty-six now, I, I'm doing numbers. No, if you're at one forty.
Any higher than that.
If it's at one, but stop, think about it, if it's at one forty-six now and you're gonna lose money next year.
Basically, I'm doubling up people.
Is that what you're doing?
And it was a hell of a weekend, let me tell you. I had two women that were fist fighting and. Awful, but we're gonna continue to brand match people a little differently.
You know, I'm a matchmaker.
Well, one was supposed to be, uh.
Do we have any other business?
I do not, Mr. Hammond.
Do I have any public comment?
No, not. No.
Well, we, we did, what we're doing, food drive at town hall, it's gonna be advertised on Laconia some this week. Uh, we gave one huge donation to Saint Joseph's Food Pantry already. We're gonna give another one by the end of the week, um. And it's going great and the community seems excited, is the wrong word, but eager to help the others in that community.
And I can, and I can attest that they are right out straight. They're seeing people and they are seeing more and more elderly than they've ever seen before. And they've seen young people that they've never seen before, but yeah.
So spread the word, bring in your donations, and it's just us helping our community, all working together, so, yeah.
Um, our next meeting is Wednesday, December third at ten o'clock. And do we have any non-honors? No, um.
What's your name, Derek?
Oh, um.
I heard it on, what's your name, Derek?
Yes.
And Sharon seconded it, all in favor?
Thank you, guys.
Can I grab that single tomorrow?
And still got.
We're all writing papers, right?
So I had, I met her.
I'm gonna get rid of that single bitch from last.
Sorry.
Yeah.
I will tell you guys, we're gonna do the next target, the other one, because Kendall lives in Bellknap.
Maybe he has a godfather house, yeah.
We're gonna do the next target, but it's not, but. We'll be the next target.
He lives on like, oh, is it Cherry, Cherry Street or something like that? He has a godfather house under his house.
So that's a, you know, it's a little spooky, huh?
Yes, yes, and the whole godfather's.
We don't have, uh, really.